We'd like to call to order the City of Belton Planning Commission meeting. This is August 6, 2024. Could we have the roll call, please?
Chairman McPherson.
Here.
Mayor Larky.
Here.
Councilmember Pryon.
Here.
Commissioner Christensen.
Here.
Commissioner Create.
Here.
Commissioner McDonough.
Here.
Commissioner Monahan-Bass. Commissioner Walton. Commissioner Wilson.
All right, thank you. We have several items on our agenda this evening that are going to be moved to another date, but we still have things to talk about tonight. So first order would be the approval of minutes from our July 16 meeting as have been presented to us. Is there anyone would like to make a motion for the approval of these minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July 16 Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
A motion and a second, thank you. Are there any corrections, additions, revisions that need to be made on the minutes as printed? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I will call to order the first item on our agenda this evening, which is a public hearing, and we will call it to order for SUP 2024-01. This is an application for a special use permit for Lily's Play and Stay Rescue Rehab and Animal Services Kennel use in a C2 general commercial zoning district at 1016 North Scott Avenue. And we will hear from our staff with the city planner, Jenna.
Thank you. An application was filed for a special use permit to allow Lily's Play and Stay Rescue Rehab to utilize a property at 1016 North Scott Avenue for animal services with a kennel and animal runs. The site is a 0.971 acre property at the northwest corner of Vivian Street and North Scott Avenue that includes G-Town Autobody in the rear and three vacant units in the front. The subject property is bound by Paradise Bar and Grill, Jay's Southland Toe, and Belton Heights Apartments across North Scott Avenue. The applicant has requested a special use permit to allow a new business in the vacant units A, B, and C at 1016 North Scott Avenue. The property is Zone C2 general commercial, which allows animal services and kennel uses with a special use permit. Lily's Play and Stay Rescue Rehab will not be open to the public, but rather used for housing and facilitating a foster animal program. However, the general staffing times for volunteers and Lily's Play and Stay staff will be from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Monday through Sunday, where the business will always have at least one employee during business hours. The existing building will be remodeled for the purpose or the proposed use with a total of 28 rooms between units B and C, while A will be renovated for a future canine training facility as well as drop-off services. Three outdoor play areas are proposed to be added to the east side of the building, which would be parallel to North Scott by removing part of the parking lot, approximately six parking spaces. These outdoor areas will be fenced with a four-to-six-foot metal picket fencing and artificial turf, which will be installed with proper drainage and cleaning. A six-foot vinyl privacy fence is proposed along the north property line, which would be between this property and Paradise Bar and Grill, which would provide the necessary screening between the two uses. The play areas would also include a 30-foot green space between the play yards and North Scott Avenue with some landscaping to provide an additional buffer. Typically, the play yards and a six-foot fence would not be allowed in the front yard of a property. However, staff believes that based on the existing nature of the site and not having an alternative location for the yards, that this is acceptable and would be an improvement to the property. We've also asked that the fences be metal pickets to not have as much of a visual barrier in the front yard. The property would have a requirement of three total parking spaces, which is met with this concept. Based on the standards for approval, Lily's Play and Stay Rescue Rehab meets all of city's standards and requirements in UDC outside of the exceptions requested, and the proposed business is in line with the character of the corridor and consistent with surrounding uses, as well as being sensitive to neighbors to the best of ability of the applicant and would be a significant investment from a small business on North Scott. So with that, staff recommends approval of the special use permit for Lily's Play and Stay Rescue Rehab with the three conditions listed in the staff report. Staff has presented the most co-compliant outdoor yard layout, but the applicant also has a presentation where she would like to present an alternative design option. So unless you have any questions for me, I'll just go ahead and change this over to her presentation.
I have one.
Sure.
Does that meet with the current North Scott overlay development plan?
That is in line with the North Scott overlay.
Okay.
Yep.
Explain the different fences again. You said it pretty quick.
So the one that I just presented in here, the proposed fencing would be parallel with North Scott, so going horizontally, and the fences would be four to six feet and metal picket fences. So the alternative that Amy is going to present is slightly different, generally the same sort of concept, but she has a slightly different idea when it comes to the type of fencing that she would like to use. So the see-through requirement that we had was more compliant with our code because we currently don't allow the six-foot fences in the front yards. So visual barrier change.
Okay, hello. My name is Amy Klein. I am the owner-operator of Lily's Play and Stay. This evening, I'm going to discuss our next initiative, which is Lily's Rescue Rehab. A little bit about me, I have spent the first 16 years of my life here in Belton. I returned in 2021 when we established Lily's Play and Stay here on Main Street. It's pretty crazy to think that I just celebrated three years on July 1st. I spent 20 years of my career working in the pet care industry, and my passions definitely align with helping my community by developing programs where pets and people can grow and develop within their local community. This is Xander. About a year and a half ago, Lily's opened up space in our current facility to support foster pets that are needing care outside of what can be provided in their current shelter situation. We connected with local foster groups and paired with Mid-America Bully Breed Rescue. Xander, formerly known as Chappie, was the first pet that they brought to us. Xander is a pit bull that had been in the shelter system for several years before coming to us. When arriving at Lily's, he was lacking socialization, manners, and patience. My team was resilient in working with him to build his confidence, teach him that there are other ways to conduct himself through positive channels, and with their compassion and unique approaches, in just 10 days, we were able to find Xander a forever home. This comes with him being in the shelter environment for years before coming to us. Xander's behavior was not his fault. His behavior was due to his environment, lack of training, and lack of exposure to outside elements. Shelters can be extremely loud, overcrowded, and quite chaotic. This can make it difficult for a pet to ever get time to decompress and can result in them feeling anxious and like they're on 24/7. Lily's was able to provide an environment that Xander was able to relax and get some training and some support that resulted to this pet finding his forever home. One more? Since Xander, Lily's has aided in finding homes for several shelter pets. We've also extended this program to our feline friends, where we've opened up one of our kitty cottages for Help Humane to add additional exposure for the pets within their care. Through the initiative that we created, this has resulted in the creation of Rescue Rehab. Rescue Rehab will be a nonprofit 28-room facility located at 1016 North Scott Avenue. Rescue Rehab will not be open to the public. We will work behind the scenes to rehabilitate these foster pets for adoption. Our channels will include working with Dr. Bradley Bays for behavior and anxiety to treat the pets and minor medical care when needed. We will work with our training team to facilitate better behavior for adoption, and my pet care technicians to show love and compassion for the pets within our program. We will have one indoor yard for the pets and three outdoor yards. In the current plans you have, we have three yards that are parallel to the building with an iron fence surrounding all of the yards. This is to include a six-foot vinyl fence between Paradise and Rescue Rehab, and we will install that vinyl fence before we work on the yards. My request is to change the layout of the yards from parallel to the building to perpendicular to the building. I'm also seeking approval for solid vinyl fencing between each yard perpendicular to the building. This would allow us to keep a solid barrier, all these blue lines, in between each individual yard, but still allow you to be able to have that visual requested to the building from North Scott to the building. If that makes sense, the top and the bottom are going to be still that medical, that metal picket fencing, and then, yes, you got it. You got it. So you would still be able to see through. We would still have that 30-foot of landscaping space where we could put some box bushes so that the pets wouldn't have any potential danger of being able to see the cars, but again, you could still see our facility, and it would still be an upgrade. This would also allow us, this layout would allow us to have five parking spots versus the three that our initial plans did, and we would also work and facilitate with our neighbors to ensure that none of that drainage would affect any of our neighboring businesses. I would like to thank you for your time this evening and see if there's any questions with my presentation.
All right. Since this is a public hearing, I would ask, is there anyone here that would like to speak either in favor or in opposition?
I would like to speak in favor.
If you'll come to the mic, identify yourself for the record, please.
I'm Dr. Teresa Bradley Bays. I used to own Belton Animal Clinic Exotic Care Center, retired in 2022, and now I'm working out of Lily's, doing acupuncture and animal chiropractic and other holistic therapies as for pause rejuvenation. What this will do is really make this area look outstanding compared to how it looks right now. And I don't know if Amy said this out loud, it's in the notes, but on the east side, the street side, there will be box bushes along the fence line so that you can still see over the fence from the street, so you can see the buildings, but it provides a visual barrier for the dogs. So it's going to be safer for the dogs, but still be way more attractive than what's there now. So this is not only going to be a boon for the community as far as serving pets that right now can't be rehomed and are often euthanized, but it's also going to be a boon for the community because, as you can see what she did with Lily's Play and Stay across the street, whatever she touches turns to gold, and she will make this not only look spectacular, but also be the utmost in care for the animals that are in her care. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here in favor or opposition? Then I'm going to go ahead and close the public session, and then, Commissioner, we can go ahead if there are questions. Mayor, did you see? Were you trying to get my attention? Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking the other way, and I, out of the corner of my eye, thought you were trying to get my attention that you had a question.
I do, but I'll wait if everybody is.
Oh, no, we're at that point now, so go ahead.
I noticed in the packet there's another. What's this?
Yes, sir. So we are purchasing the buildings to the left as well, 1010 and 1016, and that'll be a future home of Lily's Play and Stay. So just an extension of what I have across the street with more space. This is just where we're starting, is 1016.
So that's just a future thing that you, okay.
We used that concept plan for the special use permit and using that layout for the staff report for the front yard.
Have you looked at this and reviewed it?
Yeah, I've looked at it initially, and so she puts some requirements in here that they got to meet the code, so the fire code, so that's what I really care about in the end. So once they get plans submitted, we'll ensure they meet the 2018 fire code, building code, so.
We did add the two gates as well on both, on all the yards for that.
That's all I have at this time.
I guess the one question I have, with it being along North Scott, knowing that there is a lot of traffic, and I appreciate the fact that the greenery would be there, as you shared, to block that. My concern is, is that going to be something that the animals, you know, especially if they have been in a kind of a difficult situation to begin with, and then there, and would that be something? Do we feel like the height is high enough on the fence to prevent? Because, you know, you see on YouTube all the time, some of these animals that jump these fences and all, and, you know, what we don't want would be something that would set them up that they could jump and then get hit as soon as they get out on North Scott.
Right, the dogs would never be out there by themselves.
Okay.
And they would be well-vetted by the staff and by the trainer before they would be able to be off-leash in the yards. So that would be after we knew them as individuals, so, yeah.
Great point, yes, there's always somebody with the pets in the yards. Additionally, we, six foot is kind of where we stopped because that's what I thought we would be allowed. If we could do eight, I would take it. I would definitely take that. But, yeah, I figured six is kind of where they stood right now.
And with picket, there's not a problem with squeezing through?
Great question. So the thought is to be able to put, so we would have the box bushes, and then at the bottom of the fencing, be able to have some sort of like maybe a metal netting or something that would still be appealing to the eye, but safe for the pet to not be able to get through.
The other thing I have would be that, you know, I appreciate you trying to improve this area because it's been pretty bad for some time. Not bad, but it's not what it should be or needs to be, so.
We love what we do.
From what I've seen of your location across the street, you have really turned that into a nice place for pets.
Thank you.
And some of the things you were talking about that you want to give the pets, I mean, the massage and all that stuff.
Acupuncture.
How can I sign up? Do I just have to call?
Not for you, Tom. Not for you. Not for you, Tom.
All right.
I'm not licensed to treat humans.
Any additional questions, comments? Or do we have?
So the main thing on this would be if you wanted to add the modification to allow the additional vinyl fencing in the front yards for Amy's alternative, or if we wanted to stick with the originally submitted plan. So that's how we would kind of go about it. So it would just be an added modification for approval there.
Well, I would make a motion to recommend approval of the special use permit as amended for SUP 2024-01 as presented and as amended.
Okay.
Did that cover it?
Yeah, that's sufficient.
We'll do that, so we have a motion. Is there a second? Thank you. Any last discussion?
Can we give her eight-foot fences, or is that not?
I love that question, thank you.
I think the only thing that I would approve would be the one between you and Paradise would be eight-foot. I would be okay with that coming up to the building.
Yeah, typically in any commercial district, six is the max. The only places where we have allowed eight is in an industrial area. But I do think with a buffer, a taller fence between this side and Paradise, especially because they have their outdoor dining space there, wouldn't be a bad idea.
Well, I meant to keep it quiet for the dogs, because I know people that go to Paradise Club, so.
And that vinyl fencing on that north side only extends as far as their outdoor seating, so it doesn't go to the road, which allows visualization of the green space as you're coming up North Scott.
Okay.
Well, I would add to my motion that you guys work with them to make sure that visualization, you know, that, to where they can do eight, and then maybe down to six or something, you know, around that. So I'll add that to my motion.
Okay. So second, you, okay. Make sure we get it covered on both the motion and the second, so. All right. Any other discussion?
I actually think we're more worried about people coming into the fence rather than the dogs getting out.
I was thinking about the leftovers that could get tossed over the fence to the dogs. But if they're with someone all the time, then I'm sure you'd be able to take care of that before they could get a hold of it. All right. All right. Seeing no additional comments, could we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner McDonough. Commissioner Create.
Aye.
Mayor Larky.
Yes.
Chairman McPherson.
Aye.
Commissioner Christensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Pryon.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Awesome, thank you guys very much for your time. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Animals are going to be living well in Belton. All right. We have, next on our agenda, is an item that has been postponed, or we are asking to have postponed and continued until the July 16. It was continued, I'm sorry, it was continued from the July 16. We're asking to continue it again until the August 20 meeting, and this would be a public hearing, RZ 2024-02 and PDP 2024-02, application for rezoning from R1 Single Family to R1 PUD Single Family Planned Unit Development and Preliminary Development Plan for the development of 41 single-family houses and two common tracts on 11.44 plus or minus acres, generally located south of East 155th Street and west of White Drive to be known as Southview Residential, formerly the Sunset Hills Third Platte. And the request has been to continue that to the August 20 meeting, so.
Do we need a motion for that?
I believe we need a motion to continue that to that time.
Motion to approve or to postpone to August 20, item B, as presented.
All right, thank you.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor of the postponement, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item C is also was to be a public hearing, VAC 2024-01, application for the vacation of right-of-way and easement on property located at the southwest corner of I-49 and East North Avenue, 58 Highway, and this has also been asked to be continued to the August 20 meeting.
Motion to approve item VAC 2024-01 as presented till August 20, 2024.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And D, we have the consideration, this also was to be a public hearing, consideration of the adoption of the Belton 2050 Comprehensive Plan, and also requested for continuance to August 20 to allow additional time for revisions of the final draft. Is there a motion to continue?
Motion to postpone the Comprehensive Plan approval till August 20, 2024, as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of the continuation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. We now move to the next item on our agenda, which is our annual election for chair and vice chair or secretary for the Planning Commission. We can entertain nominees.
I make a motion that we approve Tom McPherson as chair, Donald Walton as vice chair secretary.
I'd second that. I'd second that.
I think they do need to be separate motions.
We do need to do them separate, okay.
I make a motion, we approve Tom McPherson as Chair of the Planning Commission.
Since we had two seconds, you each get one.
All right, I'll second this one.
All right. Any other nominations? All right. This needs to be a roll call?
Can just be a voice vote.
Voice vote, okay. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I'm going to abstain.
Why?
So it looks good. And then we also had the Vice Chair or Secretary.
Motion to approve Donald Walton as Vice Chair-Secretary, as presented.
All right, motion and second. Any other nominees? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? You missed your chance, Donald.
See what happens when you don't show up.
All right. Director's report.
Yeah, we had a number of items continued to the August 20 meeting, so we will have a meeting that evening. We have received the revisions for Southview Residential, so we are reviewing that, and we do believe that that will proceed on August 20. The developer would like to see that go on that date. And then the other two applications, we're still working through some items on those. We're still working on getting the final draft tidied up for the Comprehensive Plan, so we hope to bring that forward on August 20. Our next meeting after that would be scheduled for September 3, if any of those get further delayed. And that is all that I have.
All right. So we will have a meeting on the 20th, and bring a lunch.
We'll bring snacks, we promise.
Bring snacks, okay.
We have a whole room with them back there.
Okay.
We do not have any applications on any project like that. We do have our Future Land Use map, which the draft is up on the Conference of Plan website right now, that does have additional business park development over in that area because of the areas along 58 Highway and the railroad. You know, there's already been significant business park development up on the old Air Force Base and the work that Port KC, another development, industrial development has occurred up in that area, so that is, remains to be an attractive location for that type of development. But in terms of having any applications, we have not received any or had any pre-application meetings on any development in that area.
I'll answer that, no, they're not.
Yeah. Yeah, Marky Business Park is different than Marky Park. Marky Park is a park. Yeah, we probably should call it something different, Marky Business Park, something different, to avoid that confusion.
All right. Any other items?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Too bad. We're going home.